No one gave me the memo about wearing black today. I'm a little disappointed. The policy team didn't follow.
This, what I don't think with leggings is what I wear all the time now.
I'm not that.
When I leave the house and it was too rainy to change shoes. It's really comfortable.
So if we're all set and ready to begin, we'll um call the meeting to order. I'm trying to bring it up here on board docs. Uh, thank you for joining us. I feel like we have a a wide audience that we don't normally have. Thank you all for being here as well. I realize that you're doing it as a requirement and we're still happy to have you here as well. So please feel free to ask questions in the process. I'll have you explain what we do have policy uh what it looks like as well. So we'll begin uh with public comment. If I'm not mistaken, we do have some person uh Steve Manley is going to speak to us.
Yes, Steve Manley is virtual.
Fantastic. Steve, good to see you. Please feel free.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
You can.
Fantastic. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. Uh, tonight I am speaking in my role as a parent and a member of the school district. I want to take this opportunity to speak with you tonight about the proposed code of conduct and in relation, the ICSD safety plan. As a preface to my comments, you should be aware, I have two children in the district and a third anxious to join them still in preschool. My daughter is a fourth grade student. And during her time in school, she has learned and grown and been challenged positively in her thinking. Both academ- both academically and in terms of inclusion. Unfortunately, also during this time, she has experienced at least three different cases of sexual harassment. These have impacted her learning, her social experience, and her trust in other students. Her mother and I saw dramatic changes in her attitude towards family and friends as she processed this experience. My daughter did what she's been taught to do. She told her teachers, other school staff. The response and the communication about these events was varied in a way that felt disorganized rather than being reflective of each event's difference. I have been disheartened by the disorganized response to my daughter's experiences. At the same time, I have felt the love and the compassion of the specific people involved in each response. Please note, I do not think that a blanket or universal response to student negative experiences is available or viable. However, I do wonder what the processes and expectations for the response can be and how they are communicated from and between district and building leaders, building leaders and school staff, all of those groups and parents. With my daughter's experiences in mind, I found myself among those individuals keeping a close eye on the revisions to the code of conduct. I hoped it might provide some overarching guidelines to addressing the events like my daughter lived through. I was at first disappointed to see no references in the code of conduct specifically addressing sexual harassment. And as I reviewed the safety plan, I noticed a significant response to sexual and other assault, including potentially involving police, but little to nothing about harassment. Harassment as an event, as an incident, is mentioned inside the appendix in the list of required item. I know many of the people who've spent years working on these documents. I trust their expertise and their efforts. So I attended and watched many presentations about the code of conduct. I understand I support the goal of adjusting our district's code to reflect our vision and allow a greater flexibility to the response of student engagement with one another, especially in light of the punitive impact codes of conduct, including our own, have had on traditionally marginalized groups. During one meeting, I heard a very clarifying comment from Dr. Dan Bryman. The code of conduct is district-wide and therefore does not have a list of if this happens, then this happened. But perhaps more specific guidelines and response plans might appropriately be found in school handbooks. Having spent fifteen years in school buildings as an educator, this resonated with me. I believe schools should develop standards, practices, and be able to share them and adjust them within the community each year. As you continue to review this document and move it to an approval vote, I hope this work will not end here. I again trust the expertise, the experience of and passion of Merrill Phipps, who shared effort and time on this document when she says it's a good start. It is a document that creates space for student growth, learning, reconciliation and restoration when needed. But I request greater clarity around the processes and expectations that parents can have in how staff and school leaders are trained and prepared to address various situations, especially in relation to sexual harassment. In conclusion, as this phase of your work is completed, I implore you, as the elected individual with oversight of our school district, continue these efforts. Hold schools responsible to define and make public the processes and expectations for their students, their parents, their staff, in and around expectations and behaviors of sexual harassment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else set up to speak?
Uh, no one else.
Committee responses. Steve, I'll respond to what you have stated. Uh, a couple of key things. Um, one, thank you for sharing with our community and our committee in particular. Uh, as someone who also provides significant care uh for uh elementary school student, um realizing the complexity and nuances of every situation and uh sending strength and support to you and your family. The first discussion item on today's agenda is our Title IX and sexual discrimination procedures for the district. What we are trying to do, what we've been trying to do with my two colleagues on the policy committee for closing in on a decade is to, sorry to say that, my apologies, is to um rewrite our entire policy book, but also to try to bring alignment to multiple different policies. So for example, we have a code of conduct, we have the safety plan, and we have a policy that addresses discrimination and harassment amongst students. They don't always speak with each other, even though they all do guide the district in terms of how to move forward. So um this is a tough thing to ask a caregiver or a parent to um provide us with patience as we try to merge these and make sure all of our districts, excuse me, all of our buildings are in alignment. Um, but that's precisely what we're trying to do and continue to hold us accountable uh to make that happen. So um what I would recommend at this point in time is to read the policy on Title IX and our DASSA coordinators, the trainings that have been taking place, the professional development. And there is absolutely no doubt that the current code of conduct and its draft form, if and hopefully when approved, will continuously be a work in progress as we learn, as we find ways in which to make sure that there is seamless collaboration between multiple policies and infinite number of policies and probably much more importantly, our practices. So um that's my brief response, Steve, and I'm sure that you and I will find a time outside of these sessions to continue this conversation.
I'll just add that uh thank you, Steve, and you've given me the impetus to look at not just the code of conduct and certainly that and our policies with new eyes and with new questions. So, thank you.
Folks who know me know that I believe silence is the best transition, just to provide a moment of reflection when we have a situation as we had just heard and there is no immediate rush for us to continue on with the agenda of business as usual uh that we have to let that sit and reconcile and then try to figure out how best to proceed. So there may be not just Zoom awkward silences, but in-person silences as well, I find. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November first meeting of twenty twenty-two. A meeting that I in fact was not at, so I cannot give.
Uh, oh.
No, actually, I was at the November. I was not.
And we didn't have December.
We did not have it December.
Was I at that?
I was not. Wait. I know I, we didn't have it December because basically none of us, I'm sure I could be here, but you and I couldn't. Uh, I looked at the minutes and uh and they're fine.
Pat, you were here. I don't know if you have any agendas. The minutes are very minimal, which are.
Yeah. Yeah, I.
And it was about business policies.
Oh, that was so much fun. Sorry.
So, Pat, we can wait for a second if you're good with the minutes.
I'm gonna be good. That was, that was, it was a very uh it was kind of a cut and dry kind of meeting just because there was, there was so much that was really prescribed, so we weren't tinkering.
And we're headed back there in a few minutes.
And not a lot of emotion attached to it.
Not to the.
Which was a welcome.
Welcome, uh. Right. It was a very different kind of policy meeting when we get to that.
That is, that is accurate. So, Tricia, the minutes are approved. We will continue on to agenda item four point one, which is Title IX and sexual discrimination and harassment procedures. Uh, this has been going through a couple of additions. We have practices already current in place or published on our website. We are trying to update our policy to match that, and I don't know if I hand this off to Lily or Amanda. Um, Lily, by all means.
Good evening. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello over there as well. Good to meet you. I'm Talke, Lily Talke. I'm the deputy superintendent for the City School District. Nice to meet so many of you here today. Again, good to see ya. Uh, so this um this is our recommended Title IX and sex discrimination uh procedure. So there's a a series of policies that address a range of essentially prohibited conduct, right? Particularly around sexual harassment, sexual occult, um and other forms of harassment or bullying, right? So over the past couple of years, we've taken a look at all of them. We've looked at them all together. And now we're sort of taking the pieces out and addressing each of the policies and procedures independent of one another. So this seventeen-page procedure manual is is essentially, uh, so it's something that we work very closely with our attorneys and the attorneys at Von Shannon King on um and really make sure that we are following the law, right? Title IX is federal law. It's, it encompasses a great number of things. A lot of us, I think, who are maybe in our forties, think of Title IX as something that's really just associated with sports. Um, but it's much broader than that, right? It's about uh sexual harassment and assault on prevention and response. So this is really the response overview. We have read it before. It has been on policy before. What I'm hoping to do is that this can be um something that we can go through as a policy committee. My recommendation is is obviously as is, but you may have some changes that you'd like to make. And these are for formal Title IX complaints. So when there are are issues of sexual harassment or assaults, um, they uh there, this is an option for families to go through this formal and kids and uh folks to go through, anyone attached to ICSD frankly, uh to go through um this process.
So if I understand well, questions for Ms. Talke? For policy committee members.
Just thank you for that very clear reminder of what this particular document uh is and is not.
I'm in actually light of Stephen Manley's comments, I am looking very carefully at the definition of sexual harassment that is included under Title IX. And um I'm wondering if if you, any of you could tell us if what might be Title IX sexual harassment and what might be considered sexual harassment under the code of conduct that would not be Title IX? Like if there, is there a delineation between the two?
There's really not, and it really has to do with what the the person who's on the receiving end of the violating procedure and their and their family ultimately wants to, wants to do and the path that they want to go. Right? So regardless of whether a family or a student or a staff member decides to go down this path, we address it. Right? Our our procedure is, it's similar in a number of ways, right? There's documentation, there's investigation, right? There's immediately putting in place any sort of supports for the person who's on the receiving end, et cetera, right? We still have a step-by-step guide regardless of whether it's an official Title IX.
So, so this is basically the set of procedures that Stephen Manley wanted to know about.
I would say yes and, but you can correct me if I'm wrong at any point in time, Ms. Talke. That my understanding and another capacity is that Title IX oftentimes is considered to be a formal complaint. That there are other situations that may rise to action that we also engage in that may not be as quote-unquote formal. The district has two additional policies that address what Steve Manley was talking about. One is policy zero one one five, student harassment and bullying prevention. And the other is policy five zero two zero point one, sexual harassment of students. And this is another example where our policy book is sort of disjointed, where we have multiple policies in multiple places and we're trying to bring some continuity to all of these policies. I don't know if I've captured that correctly, and please do.
Yeah. Uh, so there are a number of avenues that folks can go and paths that folks can go down, right? That may be a DASSA complaint, frankly, a diversity for all students complaint might be the most appropriate that uh and frankly, a lot of folks know without it, right? Much more, um, there's much more of a of a common knowledge about the DASSA or maybe for all students act um procedure. So sometimes we'll receive complaints. That means sometimes we'll get them through our autonomous form that's on line and on QR codes throughout all of our schools, right? Um, sometimes we'll receive complaints um from staff members. They also have posters and QR codes that pin me and Mary Grover as my backup in order to indicate that they need help addressing a particular situation because either a student has revealed to them a sexual harassment incident or sexual assault, right, or something that they aren't sure of. Um, and and then they need support, sort of going through the process. Um, so there are a number of different ways in which um each can be addressed. I will also say, so Title IX is a federal law. Um, and then New York State also requires us to have a um a, so New York State Labor Law requires that we have a sexual harassment policy. So you see that separate sets for employees, right? Even though Title IX covers anyone connected to the City School District. We do have to have a policy that's also specific to employees. They are not um in conflict with one another. They work in concert with one another. Um, and again, folks can go down um whichever whichever path they like. The bottom line is we, you know, each year um can continue to train folks in what what they're supposed to do. And we can always do a much better job. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to take a look to make sure I'm giving correct information. One of our policies we last reviewed in two thousand seventeen and the other policy we most recently reviewed in uh two thousand nine. So it gives again some indication that we're trying to make these a little bit more up-to-date, modern with what's taking place. And so Ms. Talke, if I heard you correctly, the idea for the first agenda item for this evening would be for the policy committee to review the Title IX and Sex Discrimination Policy Draft and go through it and with some a lens of bringing questions, comments, and then to try to walk it through our policy processes, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
So I would presume that we're not going to read seventeen pages in person today. Um, we could add it on to the next agenda for February. And in the meantime, we can review and make it available for public as well to raise questions to ask. I would also attach, if we can, um, I'll attach a couple of other policies. Most of the policies are already listed at the end of this document, at the end, end of the seventeen-page document. You can find the corresponding policies, and I would recommend that we take a look at those as well and try to do it simultaneously as much as we possibly can.
I'm happy to share the fifty-some page document where I have collated every single one of those and created a table of contents. I think we looked at those a couple of years ago. So I'm happy to share that again and the PowerPoint presentation that sort of is an overview. It kind of gives the history again.
Yes.
Um, that just might be happy, uh, good to, good to include. And Tricia, I'll send them to you so they can go in the minutes for the public as well again.
Yep.
Okay.
And a key thing for me, um, just for the community to know that this is an area and a topic that we have been talking about uh for as long as I can recall, much more specifically over the past year. And I know that we've been meeting with students at Ethica High School to have conversations as well about our policies and our procedures, particularly around bullying and harassment. Am I correct about that?
Yes, and I'll share that um last night, we had a staff meeting where students presented what's called an I-Support Survivors Toolkit. Uh, they worked uh for an internship over the summer through the United Way with the Advocacy Center and collaborated. There are students who collaborate very closely with with um us here in the district as well. Um, and uh the district ultimately printed all their anything materials, including stick uh sticker that said I support survivors that teachers can put on their um in their classrooms. So folks, so students know I can, I can reveal um instances that um that may be violent or sexually violent in nature, sexually harassing in nature um and that the the educator will frankly know what to do and how to respond on, right? Um, and some really amazing posters um that they put together in addition to many resources. So last night at L E C S, they did the training um and uh some of us were there to support. And then the last week at I H S, uh students did that. It was really, really fabulous. And we're gonna continue doing them and and uh get them into elementary schools and middle schools as well.
Yep. And that would be the question for me is the translation. I know our high school students um were doing our best to support advocacy, both pure advocacy and self-advocacy. What does that look like at an elementary level as well, which becomes a little more complicated? So so if I understand correctly, this will be on the agenda. We'll put fifty-some pages available for reading the PowerPoint. Um, and we may be able to find some of the additional meetings where this has been discussed as well, that we've been having some of these conversations. Um, with that being said, I feel it's probably important to mention when we get there, the code of conduct is not going to be prescriptive, but rather set a framework. And we've been doing that for quite some time, is trying to set a framework. And so it will require um professional development, conversations, right? Uh, building culture. We're going to do this for all, you know, all of our buildings as well. So uh, we appreciate as much support from community members, students, parents and caregivers as we can, as we go through this.
May I say something?
Please, uh, you let us know who you are.
Uh, yeah, I'm Annabelle Shear. I'm a senior at I H S. Uh, I just thought it was interesting, uh, focusing on elementary school, I think, to focus on it more would be helpful because then it would play the groundwork for advocacy instead of trying to play catch-up when something has happened and someone older. I think that would be more.
Absolutely. Great. I appreciate that. And I know our elementary schools are working on it. The question is about sort of collaboration and.
Yes, it's really focused.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Such a great point. We're also rewriting our whole uh K through five curriculum. Which is great. And there are a number of tenants of it, including consent and boundaries. And and more. And so that process continues. We're getting more educator feedback as well. Um, and Jess Jordan, who's a health teacher in ICSD, is working with Lynn's staff of the Advocacy Center, to find that, and then working with teachers to refine that further as well.
Any other questions or comments about agenda item four point one? We will continue to agenda item four point two, uh, policy fifty, is it fifty-seven hundred or sixty-seven hundred?
Seven hundred.
I have glasses, but I'm not even going out, so. Uh, policy sixty-seven hundred about purchasing, and I will uh hand this over to Amanda.
Great. So um hello, everyone. I'm Amanda Burbank, the chief operations officer of the district. Uh, there is, there are many policies and in fact, an entire series of policies that have to do with essentially the business operations side of the school district, right? So um, school district, uh, to be able to educate, engage and empower kids and staff, we actually have to have procedures and policies in place to guide the way that we do the work, right? So tonight, one of the things that we're going to be focusing on is the guidance and policy around how we purchase things, right? So um, policies are really, A, by law, required, and then B, also want to represent sort of who we are as a community. Um, and so we know that being able to have flexibility to buy things to support classrooms is really important. And there are also um New York State purchasing laws that govern the way that we are allowed to do those things. So hopefully this rewrite and we um we actually um asked for an expert's help. You might know Angela Jordan. Um, actually, who just recently retired from many more than thirty years, the district and mostly in the business office. Um, actually worked with a few other BOCs in districts, pulled policies, looked at our policy, did a side-by-side. And so what you see here is um an absolutely wonderful contribution of Angela, Sidney Wade, and myself um in the business office uh as a first draft review. So a few of the highlights, and I know Pat loves to really read our business office policies, and that's so exciting for me. Few of the highlights that I do want to say, we rearranged sort of the order to make it flow a little bit better. That's the first thing. There are some things that actually um, since we uh first had this policy, we talked a little bit more about um the idea of piggybacking, right? Which is where you can like sort of essentially jump into a contract that someone else bid. Um, and so they did the work for you, and you can actually like sort of go into that process and take uh the lowest bidder or vendor from the process that they went through. So that's, there's some newness there around that language. We also, some of the thresholds, again, we talked about this the last time. Um, in the past, I'm going to the very last page, um, some of the thresholds for purchasing and when we required proposals or quotes or quotations, um, we've actually increaseded a bit because they felt um a little too restrictive in today's current market. Um, so uh currently in the, in the very current policy, not the one in front of you, when you were looking as a staff person to purchase something that is um with any, any vendor or any, even if it's a loan or a group of things, um, from five to ten thousand dollars, you need to get two quotations. And then anything from ten thousand, one dollar to twenty thousand dollars, you need to get three quotations. And we're eliminating, we're asking to eliminate the three quotations and go from the five thousand to the twenty thousand to quotations. Um, and then you go to the bidding laws where you actually have to do an official bid for anything over twenty um or thirty-five, uh, depending on the type of service. But that's just one, one highlight.
Can you say more about why you want to make that change?
We do. Um, a lot of times when this comes into play, it's almost always facilitated. It's almost always facilities or special education related. And um, I think that. Really sort of already know who the vendors are that are reputable, that we can reach out to. It doesn't mean that we can't go to more. It just means that at a minimum of two, that's what we need. That third vendor, you especially post COVID, for some areas gets a little bit trickier. Because some of the places that we went to are no longer in business. And so we really feel like twenty thousand dollars out of a one hundred and fifty million dollar budget is still a low threshold for two quotes. And you still can't exceed that, but.
Tell me if I'm mixing up policies as well. There are still requirements to notify the board of what's being done. Just as a required board approval prior to the purchase.
So we, anytime we enter into larger contracts, we still, we, we put those on a consideration of accounts. Um, and so uh, you know, I'm gonna have to look to see if there's a threshold for that. In current board policy, and if not, we can definitely cite that somewhere.
Has this gone through Finance Committee or this has just come to the policy?
This is coming to the Policy Committee. And so what I, you know, based on what we did with the um, purchasing. Um, I was thinking that the monetary thresholds that I just described, I would put that on the agenda of Finance Committee on Tuesday, just to alert them of that. Um, the procedures are still the same and then you'll notice there's a lot of protections here. Um, there's still board of action as to. The reason why it says Chief Operations Officer, comma, person, purchasing agent is I am purchasing agent. Sidney Wade, who is the Assistant School Business Executive, actually currently is also the purchasing agent. But what we would do is designate her and then another, whoever the account clerk is. Um, to be able to be the purchasing agents, um, either an assisting me. Uh, or uh, you know, as a deputy, whatever, whatever language we want to use. Um, and everything else really is, uh, again, I tried to, we tried to incorporate some language around um, who we are. As, as a district as well, and our spirit of trying to engage local bidders, right? And I'm trying to make it as easy as possible, utilizing BOCs and then for our staff to be able to have lots of avenues to be able to purchase.
So one of the things that we know from doing policy after policy after policy is that titles tend to change. And so is there, and we can have this conversation with, before our first reading. Would it be my, would it be helpful for us to say sort of Chief Operations Officer or person, purchasing agent? Or usually we use the phrase and or designate, right? So it's still covered under the policy, but the names that we know or the persons may change. Is that something that we may want to consider for this policy as well? Or is that put us outside of New York State law or purchasing law?
It, it doesn't. Um, the only thing that I would say is that um. This Assistant School Business Executive, I mean, I think that we're hoping that that's going to be a part of the business office for quite some time. And to give the authority of someone, especially if I'm not there or something happens, right? Like have one other person named, um, would, I think would be great. But as far as the account clerk, that's where you might be able to replace the designated, if that's, that's an acceptable modification.
Uh, Pat or more questions, comments? Suggestions?
So I'm just thinking that as it's written, the Chief Operations Officer is the purchasing agent. But the Assistant School Business Executive and an, an account clerk typus that is. Is that a specific clerk type this for? Okay, um, that they are authorized as just the purchasing agent. That's already specifying who the designees are, and I don't know if we could go any further than that.
We, we can, we can make as many designees as we want, or what I think you were saying is replace those titles with just the term designate. And that's fine. I mean, we can do more designate.
These are, these are things that we voted on during the reorg meeting as well, right? So it's already, there are multiple checks or not multiple, there is at least one check already in place. So during the. July reorganization meeting, we identify who are the purchasing agents.
That there's two of us right now. It's, it's myself and Sidney.
And maybe we can even put language like that, like whoever's been identified at the reorganization meeting. We can always add a resolution later during the year if we have to make that change. But at least then we know where to check back to who's been identified. As the purchase, as a purchasing agent for the district.
I, I'd just like to make a, a general comment on this policy. And I will, I, I'll set a preamble by saying. On many Sundays, my husband buys the Scranton uh, Pennsylvania newspaper. Why is that relevant? There have been so many financial scandals attached to the Scranton City School District. Specifically, school board members who either they don't have a policy or they don't follow it. And they work massive, no paid contracts to friends of theirs, like a multi-billion dollar contract for school buses. That the only reason it's ever come out is that the Scranton newspaper, unlike our own, is still an investigative newspaper. And they put people on it. So regularly, I fed little stories of uh. Uh, this educational mis, financial misdeeds of those who should be in the public trust.
I think we should create a T-shirt that says Scranton were more than just a TV show, the office. So we'll, we'll have to work on this. And so.
Yeah, Pat, I just, I, I will say, I'm gonna give a shout out to the business office. They are really fantastic and works very closely with clerical. Including the board clerk. And also, we have lots of parameters placed for uh, checks and balances. Um, one example this year is that we recognized that we were quickly approaching a threshold of twenty thousand dollars. With a very favorite vendor, and we had to give the bad news that we needed to start to use other local vendors. To provide that service supply material to the district. So that's just one example of which would work and the catch of the business office early before we were already beyond the threshold. To say that we needed to educate and engage other opportunities locally. Thank you.
So Amanda, we do this with other policies, but is, would the ideal be that? We would say this, you know, as a first draft, we're okay with it. We know some modifications may happen. That it goes to the Finance Committee and that they take a look at it as well, make sure that they're good with it. And then we put it on a full board agenda for a first reading, is that a process by you?
Yes, and if you notice anything in the language of this that, you know, um, please, please alert me and I can make that change.
I think other than the, the designated, the Sean, it's just the conversation that Moira and I had about the other policies. That there's really so much that is legally required to be raised in a certain way. That this is not one that we're gonna be. Yeah, pretty much.
This is in a little bit more plain language than the um, investment policy. I think it's like a little easier, easier for things.
And to all of our esteemed guests in the audience, the process to pass a policy in the Ithaca City School District. Is that it comes to the Policy Committee, we would approve it, we would send it to the full board for a first reading. If the full board approves it, comes back to the Policy Committee to do, make any edits. And then it goes back to the full board for a second reading and adoption. And the purpose of that is that we're just not making rash decisions. We're thoughtful, we're trying to get as many voices as possible. It includes community and public and caregiver involvement. So that's why we're asking a question about what is the process, right? So where should it go next? And so from here, it's going to go to the facilities, to excuse me, to the Finance Committee. Then from the Finance Committee, go to the full board for a first reading is what that looks like. So enjoy. So without any further conversation, we're good with the um, Agenda Item four point two. Agenda Item four point three is Policy sixty two forty, Investment Policy. We were, I believe we already reviewed this once. But let me step back, because I don't think I was here for that meeting. I think that was the meeting that I missed in November.
Um, we have thoroughly, we read it. Um, we actually then followed up at the Finance Committee meeting. It was the evening that we had both um, three plus one. Who was our investment consultant and fiscal advisors, our financial consultant at the same meeting. So you had two, again, consultants slash experts to evaluate um, the policy that can be contributed to. Right? So um, so I, I feel really confident in recommending this to the board.
And I can't just for our, for our student visitors, a, a great um. Part of, a large part of the investment uh, policy is to specify what kind of true debt. The district may invest the, the taxpayers' money, your, your. Your family's money that sends to the district and everyone in here. To make sure that it is basically these investments are as risk free as possible. So Bitcoin. Nothing, yeah, not, not, not even, you know, stocks, not things that can be volatile. That, that you're not going to get enormous rates of return, but, but we. We as a district in our business office um, is setting, is setting up very secure parameters. That will, that will not allow um, this money to be at risk.
So I know this was one that was um, recommended for us to take a look at from our audit. Uh, at the end of last year, if it's good, I think I know it's gone through the Finance Committee already. I know that this Policy Committee has taken a look at it. If there's no other questions, we'll ask Tricia to put on the next school board meeting for a first reading. And proceed from there. I imagine the similar may be true, but let's see for uh, the Agenda Item four point four. Policy six one five zero, which is about transfers and the way in which we have budget transfers of money. So Amanda, I'll hand that to you as well.
Right, so that one um, also had a, an increase in the thresholds, right? And so um, we asked for that to be uh, I think at, at the time, the current policy, it's like three thousand dollars. And we're, as I said, we're increasing ten. We talked to the Finance Committee and they approved that as well, and that's the same thing. And this is also ready, I would recommend this for the board.
So the only change to this policy, the last time we addressed this policy was um. Literally fifteen years ago, close to sixteen years ago now. Uh, and at that time, it was a three thousand dollar threshold. Fifteen years later, with inflation and everything else, we're saying maybe ten thousand dollars is a, a much more efficient way for us to do business.
I didn't do the calculation, but uh, you know, we feel that ten thousand is a very reasonable task.
Yep. And this again, and even though it's. The ability to do budget transfers is our, is also known uh, to the committee. So it's not just like someone transfers money and no one knows about it. It goes to finance, it's on our consideration of accounts, uh, the consent agenda. So um, I took a look at it. It was good by me, uh, Moira and Pat. I don't know if you have any questions or recommendations.
And we, we discussed this pretty thoroughly last time.
Great, great. So Tricia, we're also gonna add Policy six one five zero. Budget transfers for our first reading to the next full board meeting as well. Great, thank you all very much. Uh, the next agenda item is uh, Agenda Item four point five, the Code of Conduct. This has been a uh, a journey is the most positive way I can describe it. Uh, we had our public hearing as mandated by law, uh, I went in December. And this is uh, we have taken the feedback. I will uh, publicly acknowledge and thank the work of Dan Bryman and of Lily Talkit. Who have been very active and so have other folks, but in particular. Um, reaching out to teachers, reaching out to students, reaching out to PTAs, reaching out to parents and community groups. We've had a number of feedback sessions. Most recently, uh, Dr. Bryman and Miss Talkit went through and made edits. Based on that feedback. Uh, the draft, I believe that Full Table Access two was draft January eleven. Uh, which is the most recent draft. It is not formatted. It is simply in text form to make sure we know what text has changed. Once, uh, it should be in the um, the board docs. If not, I can send in the link as well.
I just looked at both of them. Oh, I think. Oh, okay, yeah.
And the process for this would follow the same process as any other policy. If the Policy Committee so chooses, it would go to the board for a first reading. Then we would continue to discuss it. It would go to the board for a second reading and adoption. Uh, I want to say, Dan, on this draft, we're talking about close to three years now. Three and a half years, uh, just for this draft and numerous folks who have had a hand in writing. And um, asking for some clarifications. Uh, what I will continue to say, and I'm borrowing the language from Miss Talkit. Is that if and or when this Code of Conduct is adopted, that would then become year zero. Right? That there would be significant amounts of work that would need to be done to make this um, happen. And it would not be an implementation document. It's a frame. So more impact, questions, comments, concerns, critiques? Now is our opportunity.
I have one. Is there a newer one?
This is the draft. As if you want.
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have anything right now.
Well, as I said, I, I feel like based on Steve's comments and the discussion we just had about. The turn nine procedures, I sort of want to look at this with that particular lens. And then also, we're gonna be looking between now and the next meeting at related policies. And so I feel like.
Yes, it's, it's a lot there. This is, last I checked, and I don't know. When it's formatted, I believe it's gonna be close to thirty seven or thirty eight pages. I could be off about that by a page or two, maybe it's even forty pages when it's formatted. My humble recommendation would be that we put this forward to the full board. Nothing stops us from making edits at any point in time, especially prior to adoption. But at least if the committee puts it forward, then we can do that reading in the meantime and make any suggestions at that board meeting. Um, I imagine other folks who come speak to us about what is included in this most recent draft. Uh, and even when it's adopted, there's nothing that stops us from changing or editing at any point in time. It's a quote unquote, living document. It's an ongoing document. We don't pass it and then we walk away from it. It's not gonna work that way. So wherever we're at, at that point in time is what we're trying to do. I do know that there are some community groups that still have some questions, and I know there's other community groups that want it passed in twenty twenty two. So uh, or maybe twenty twenty one, right? So um, my recommendation would be that we try to put it forward to a, a board meeting. And have the conversation in public about where we want to go and what's missing and what we can do to improve it. Yeah, um, thanks for that, make sure. Keeping it moving.
Keeping it along.
And I'm so sorry, I stepped away for a moment, but I don't know if you saw page fifteen, that'd be updated one. Uh, where it talks about sexual harassment in the protocol. I said, I probably said that.
I did not say this, so thank you, Lily.
Yeah, I was, well, I, I was just looking for that.
We did receive that feedback. We tried to make sure that was implemented into the actual code.
Then followed by Jess.
Right.
Excellent.
And access to some other appendices that will further specify things that folks are looking for as well. So Tricia, we're gonna have a fun meeting. I don't even know what. Twenty fourth. I don't know what it looks like, but if we add the Code of Conduct as well. Uh, which I'm, I think I'm hearing to add for a first reading, now that we've had our public hearing. And we'll keep, we'll keep it moving forward. And I will continue to repeat, we can continue to make edits even when we have this draft. Does that work for everybody? Fantastic, fantastic. So talking about how our policies have been something that we're trying to get our hands around. Our next policy is probably a really good example of this, and I want to thank, and I believe I did see you, Carrie. Hi, Carrie, how you doing? We are gonna move to discuss Policy four, excuse me, five, four, two, three dash R, which is a regulation. When I looked at the policies, we had Policy five, four, two, three, which did not include the regulation in electronic form. But did include the regulation in paper form. And thank you, Carrie, for your thoroughness. Realizing that both probably need to be updated given new New York State guidelines. So I'll hand it over to you if you want to help us walk through what we're taking a look at.
That's a great summary. So um, with the emergence of new guidelines from New York State around medication management. We started reviewing our policies around it. And so in doing so. Our policies around it, so in doing so, we recognized that it referenced. A regulation that was not available electronically, but we will find in our paper archives, so one, one, I think, action that um. Beyond reviewing or revising it, um, going forward is to have it. It adopted or integrated into board docs, um, so this is available for review by the public and others who are interested. Uh, so that was probably the the biggest uh component to this, um. The state policies aren't updated frequently and when they do, we pay close attention, so this is one area where we wanna make sure that we are in alignment with what the state's requiring.
And just so our, the public can be aware and again, our guest. Uh, policy five, four, two, three. Um, administering medication to students was passed in two thousand eleven. There was an updated draft in two thousand thirteen, we're not sure if that was ever approved. Uh, the good thing is, at this point in time, right now, it doesn't matter because we need to do a two thousand twenty three version. And that will make sure we have record of and that it makes it into our board docs policies as well. Uh, Carrie, can you tell us what the change is um, or what we should be looking for? In terms of the previous policy and the updated policy version?
Oh, that's a great question, actually not a whole lot, so it's really sort of tweaking around the edges, I think in some respects. Uh, there are things about this policy that are dated, for example, there's use of references to. He, me, him, her, so we're gonna look to change the language to be aligned with how uh we identify as invisible and not school community identify themselves. Um, but not, no substantial changes, right?
So this is just when we were looking for the regulation, we noticed it did not exist in our current policy book virtually.
Right.
And so we need to make sure that we have it. Pat, more questions?
Yes, the other, the other uh place where uh I think the. Language doesn't align with current practices, the old, this twenty eleven one says parent or guardian and we have switch parent or caregiver.
So. Is there a legal? Issue here? Where it needs to be a legal guardian?
That's a good question, I, the state and the guidance, I think, continues to use the terms parent guardian. So if we want to defer to our line with the state.
Caregiver. Could be. Interpreted very, very broadly. Um, and potentially problematic.
Yeah. Yeah, so it would have to align with with the book and. Since you're talking about medication given to a minor, we may need guardian.
Well, here's the fun of policy committee. Where we may have some other options as well, and that I'm aware of folks who are not a parent and not a guardian. And yet still have. Uh, medical say and a child.
Oh.
Right, so there's a, there's nuance there as well, that I may not be the legal guardian. But I'm still authorized to make medical choices, decisions for a person that I'm caring for.
So we could say authorized caregiver? Is there a legal authorization that goes with that?
That's probably, I think, a really good question for our legal counsel about. If we wanna be completely inclusive. Um, so I do agree that guardian should be in there, it's not words that we've been using, but. Great question, Moira, that probably, probably should. And there are other situations that we may wanna come for as well. And so this may be a policy, I would imagine we're already, we've updated our practices, we're already doing some practice. Uh, but this may be a policy that we review and rewrite for. The February meeting before we send it off to the board to answer some of these questions.
Yeah.
As well. And I would presume, but may, maybe this is just me, that there's probably been some change. There's probably more questions being asked. Since twenty twenty. It's the best way I could for, I will never say post covid, but. In the midst of whatever we're in now, that people are probably paying much more attention to, what does this mean?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, and I, so I, the other thing about it too is because policy drives training. It'll be very important that the regu- we don't often have regulations for all of our policies, but this is one area, particularly around medications, because it's one of the interventions that we. See nurses involved with on a daily basis. Um, and a key piece to allowing students to be in school and stay in school, so having uh regulations that really reflect. Uh, current practice and current guidance and stays can be important, because it does drive how we train our nurses as well.
Right. I have a question, I didn't read this, um. Is there information about this when they travel, we have and the, and also international travel? I just, and it's in there, is it up to date with whatever? Legislations and?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good point, uh, certainly, yes, yes, when students are. Um, engaged in any sort of school sponsored event, including overnight. We do talk about, we often have to collect information about medications they normally take outside of school. So that is in here, but certainly can be reworded, there's many items that can be made to just sort of clarify the information.
Other questions?
I guess I'm just, um. We, we have a separate policy that has to do with. Uh. That be. Yeah, right, because it's mentioned here also. And I guess I'm, I just as we continue to look at this, uh, on a little bit, I find myself. Having questions about high school students uh self medicating and. And how that works.
Well, it also raises questions about various districts who are also providing. For lack of a better word, anti overdose medicine available in buildings as well, and I don't know if that would be covered here. Or if that's a separate policy that we should be considering. We did, and I think we're in a. I think we're gonna try to extend that, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, or we may already have and we may need a policy to cover that as well, and maybe we do them in tandem.
Yes.
You're supporting that idea?
Yes.
Was that part of the policy that kind of just nailed with the lockdown or didn't?
So we have, so we have the ability to, to, currently in the health office, we have Molaxone or Narcan. Um, what we are, what we now are is we actually are an opioid overdose prevention site. In that staff who complete an online training can then be ones to carry. And we can administer, give them Narcan, so we can issue it previously, we're going through a third party, like the Southern Tier East Institute. Um, but now we can be the ones to issue Narcan to school staff who wants to carry it. Uh, following the part of training. So that's, that's the new piece of it and definition of the process. We wander around the non patient specific orders for students who might be suffering, that's been in place, we have now, yeah. So the new durations around staff.
Carrie, is if you don't have a mo- you know, enough on your plate, can I ask you to take a look at what some sample language like that would be? We oftentimes get language from this book, which is fantastic, and we know, um, it doesn't. It's usually not locale specific. Right, so. Uh, or as someone told me at one point in time, we need to ethikize or, or I think that's getting what the language was, right, but.
Yeah.
Um, if I could humbly ask that, that'd be. So with this policy, what we'll recommend is that it's on the next policy committee. If we can ask our colleagues to take a look at it, read it with any questions, language suggestions, anything that you may wanna add our way. Um, and then after the February meeting, we'll put it to the full board from there.
The policy and the regulations.
Yes, yep, both, we'll update both at the same time. And any other related policies that you recommend that we look at would be helpful, just for us to. To know, right, or in the conversation, might as well continue the conversation. Fantastic, fantastic.
There is this shit. Which straight, because I have to leave.
Well, that brings us to uh. Uh, any agenda setting items for our future meeting, do we have any?
We, we, we just had like, yeah. Yeah, we got several things for the February meeting.
Yep, already a lot.
Yeah.
Well, if there's nothing else, then we'll adjourn the meeting.
Evening, John.
Fantastic, thank you all, thank you all for joining us.